If you, if there's.
We just need him to be there for both.
Do you have a problem with the very first one?
I need to phone calls.
Yeah, I won't be here.
Everything else will depend on.
I'll be in Canada still on the twenty-sixth. And I'll leave tomorrow morning. No, actually, on the twenty-sixth, I'll be in Florida.
I supposed to do that?
I'm sorry, they've had, I've just been on the road like crazy.
Yeah, no.
I'm sorry.
That's probably one of your email.
I think you did something, I didn't do whatever I supposed to do.
Anyway.
Okay, it is now, it's now seven o'clock and we will start our meeting. Call Mr. Johnson for the invocation.
Lord, again, we come to you asking for your wisdom and your grace and, Father, we've been careful to pray for our chairman and his illness and now we'll be careful to give you the praise for his improvement. Father, we just thank you for him and in this hour, we pray you'll be with him, he'll continue to gain strength. What a blessing it was to speak to him on the phone and hear his strong voice and he seems like he's much better than he was and, Father, a couple of weeks ago, we were asking you for a miracle and it seems we seen one and we give you the praise for it. As we go through this agenda tonight, we pray that our greatest desire will be to please you and to serve the people of this county in a way that will glorify you, for we ask it in Christ's name, amen.
Let's stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call on Mr. Mashburn for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, there's only one adjustment to the agenda and that is to remove the closed session. That item will not be coming before the board this evening, so we will remove the closed session from the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any additions to the agenda or corrections? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the agenda. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Since we only have, we don't have any special recognitions tonight, appointment before the board will be Mr. Gray and Mr. Summers, are you here? You may come up now.
Members of the county commission, thank you for your time. I'm here on behalf of the supervisors of the Iredal Soil and Water Conservation District. Department head Jim Summers is here to back me up in case I get in a little too deep. But we're here for fiscal year ten funding on the beaver management program that the county, I think this is the fourth year in the row that we've participated in this program. I note that funding on a lot of things is very tight at this time, but we, we believe we're getting a seven dollars and a quarter return for every dollar paid in. We're requesting four thousand dollars to be enrolled in that program once again. And this would be from August one to July thirty-first, would be the time period that we'd be enrolled. Not only do we use the program on the watersheds on Third Creek that we manage, but also anyone in Iredal County that would have a nuisance problem could have them come out for fifteen dollars a visit and then if a dam has to be destroyed, it'd be an additional hundred dollars and that is extremely reasonable for what a person would have to go out on their own and hire someone for this service. So we think it's a money well spent.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Mr. Gray, when did you say that deadline was, July twenty-one?
The time that this, we would be enrolled would be from August the first to July thirty-first, that would be the time that we'd be signing up for.
Oh, okay.
Do you know the deadline?
I'm sorry, I just misunderstood.
Then we're talking about two thousand and ten for sure.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess, Mr. Mashburn, have you included this in your budget presentation we're gonna get tonight?
There are funds in there in soil and water conservation that, that would cover this, it's four thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, this is generally not under the budget of the Iredal Soil and Water Conservation District, I believe that's correct. This is in addition to.
I know we talked about it and I'm, I'm sure there's four thousand dollars in here for, for that program because we, it's fun, it was funded the current year and.
They're required to come and physically appear each time?
Well, you're required to prove it each year, the program being a part of the program and then you've always asked in the past that they come and give an update as to how successful the program has been and make a decision as to whether or not you want, want to go forward with that.
Under the program, this past year from Au, just from a smaller time, not a year long, but from August to first to April first, there were thirty-six beaver traps, eleven of them were off those watershed structures and I believe there were nineteen acres that were affected and tremendous savings. Once these animals get a hold of a structure and start clogging it up, it's quite costly to reverse it.
I'm familiar with this.
We have set aside for the Third Creek watershed, twenty-five thousand dollars in that we've included the four thousand dollars for the beaver program.
I agree, Mr. Gray, it's money well spent. That field trip I took with Mr. Summers that time was an education for me, I think one of those ponds, we spotted four beaver and let me tell you, four beavers can ruin a dam pretty quick.
Jim told me that at one of the sites, they set traps today and it was clean a month ago where they, they had worked that area and now they're already back in there, so it's not like that, you know, we can do it one year and, and we can take off five years. I mean, sometimes in a matter of just months, they're back again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thanks, sir.
We will now move to administrative matters, Mr. Mashburn.
Okay, under administrative matters, the first item, item A is a request to approve budget amendment number fifty-two to transfer some unspent funds from salaries to maintenance, repair buildings and grounds to cover the cost of parking lot repairs in excess of the budget. What happened here, if you recall, at the tax administration building, we had in the budget this year to re, repave that parking lot and in order to do that, we had to take up all the old concrete, which was really uneven and busted up and so when we started doing that, we found that there was a lot of the soil underneath that had to be replaced and we came to you before about that, but then, if you'll also recall, we found that there was an open, and nobody really knows what it was, but it was a deep hole. I mean, it was brick, a well of some kind, but nobody could ever tell us what it had been used for in the past. Well, it had never been, that hole had never been filled. Bill, how deep would you say that hole was?
It's approximately forty feet.
About forty feet deep and it was probably ten or more feet in diameter. It was a deep, wide hole and it'd never been filled before and it had just been capped over. Well, because of the rules and regulations now, we had to report it and they wouldn't let us just cap it, we had to actually fill the hole. So that took more money, more time than everything that we had anticipated. There's enough money in the budget to do it, it's just in, in lap, in salary lapse salary account and it would take your approval to approve that budget amendment.
I don't find Jimmy Hoffa's wallet.
We didn't find, there was a pipe that went down from the top to the bottom, but we never did figure out what it was for.
Okay, now entertain a motion.
One question that we were short twenty thousand, six seventy-three and we're gonna move fourteen-nine out of unspent salaries, was the other fifty-eight hundred bucks approximately?
Yeah, that's, that's all we need, that we, we can identify other funds and, and out of salaries, the board has to approve that.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, motion to approve budget amendment number fifty-two.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Okay, the next item is budget amendment number fifty-three and all this does is to take proceeds that we've received back from the insurance company where claims have been filed and put those back into the line items where the expense was incurred.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Mr. Wall is here from the Department of Social Service to address item C.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Iredal County has been awarded forty-six thousand dollars in the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two thousand and nine. This request is to appropriate these funds to the overtime line item in the DSS budget. You have a letter, April thirteenth, two thousand and nine, in your packet and says the administrative funds are available from April nine, two thousand and nine, through September thirtieth, two thousand and nine, and October one, two thousand and nine, through September thirtieth, two thousand and ten. Funds may be used to pay overtime, hire new staff or contract staff to assist with the increased demand for food assistance. The funds must be used to provide food and nutrition services benefits to the residents of your county. Fund balances will be carried up forward to state fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nine. We're requesting that this money be used to pay overtime for our food stamp staff so that they can work their backlog and the big demand that we've had for the past two or three years. The food stamp program is continually increasing. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Wall, when, by accepting this money, did it come with any strings attached? Are we required to change any rules or are we committing ourselves to spend any money in these, in the out years beyond, you know, beyond the time when this forty-six thousand can be spent?
No strings attached, sir.
And there's no local match, I assume?
No, no local match.
Any additional questions for Mr. Wall?
Just one more time, no ongoing efforts or continuation of anything or whatever, we get it and that's it, we get the money and then we don't have to do anything.
That's it, we, we are told that after September, that in October, the county will get another amount awarded to us and at that time, we'd come forward to commissions, but all the stem, the stimulus money that we're expecting in other programs too, have no strings attached to them at this time.
Okay, Mr. Wall, thank you. entertain a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I was actually gonna take care of the next item, but Mr. Doolittle had to be here anyway tonight, so he's gonna do that.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I've reviewed the refunds and releases, none of the commissioners who are on them, respectfully request that they be approved.
Just with great fanfare, then I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion to approve, any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
The next item, item E deals with declaration of surplus items and providing authorization to dispose of, of the items. Mr. Dean Lael, our purchasing director, will handle that one. Mr. Lael, are you also gonna handle item F while you're here?
I can, sir. I sure can.
Okay.
It's come time again to decide whether we want to declare surplus, a number of personal property items and also fitting vehicles and to declare them surplus and to authorize the sale of those, either at public sale or by other means. You should have in front of you, along with my request, a resolution to, to, for that action and also three lists, the original personal property list, that was devised some time ago and presented to the board. In addition, vehicle services identified fifteen vehicles for surplus and, excuse me, this morning I was presented with a number of additional items departments have declared surplus for their use and we would like to have all of these items declared surplus and permission given to me to be able to sell those and take care of the necessary actions to dispose of them.
Mr. Lael?
Yes, sir.
How would these be advertised to the public?
I'm sorry, sir.
How would these be, item B advertised to the public?
They'll be advertised by a local advertisement in the safety record landmark, also the auctioneer publishes those online, he also publishes additional ads in, I believe it's called Auctioneer Journal, so they do get pretty good coverage.
Okay. Any additional questions? Not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, likewise.
The next item I have, sheriff's office has determined that a, one of their canine units, I believe it's called Quiney, has become too old to serve safely and too old to serve his officers safely in the line of duty. They'd like to have the, the animal declared surplus and sold by private negotiated sale to the handler, which has been determined to be the safest way to, to dispose of the animal from our property. They would like the declaration to include the sale cost at one dollar.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
I did have one alibi question, I'm sorry, from the previous one. What's the criteria for vehicles going to the, to the sale? I mean, I, you know, there's some vehicles on here with a hundred and seventy thousand miles and others with ninety-three, even though the ninety-three was an older vehicle. Is there any rationale, do you know, Paul?
Vehicle services usually, it all depends on what type of service record they have on those. Some of these vehicles have had a lot of service and, and especially the Crown Vix, they're determined to be a little too old to be put on the road and we don't have departments to put those in. The ninety-three has served, I believe, in three different departments, so it's, it's just determined to be too old and has, starting to have a lot of service incidents to it.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Sorry for delayed question.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, I'm gonna call on Mr. Vaughn to make some comments on the next item. I will say that what has been requested here is basically what we've always done here, but because of some new requests out of the university, we're presenting this to you for your approval. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you and good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think what Mr. Mashburn has said kinda sets a tone. It's basically what we've done, but not in this more formal manner, in a written form. And to clarify the role of each in the signing of certain documents. Basically, I agree in the fact that any monies that we apply for or get would be run through the county, which we've done some of this in the past and have always come and asked for permission to apply for a grant. If we were successful and the money came in, it was turned over to the finance office, they did a budget amendment. But that was operating strictly under the county guidelines, which I have utilized in applying for any informa, any money like this. This sets in place a formal action if it's money coming through the name of the university, the North Carolina Quaffed Extension Service, as how we would handle it. And I think it's noted here on the, in item one of the suggested outline or letter, when it says, "The co-signature does not contractually bind the county or nonprofit affiliate unless accompanied by an authorized signature of the county or nonprofit affiliate." So it's not an open means to, for me to sign documents on behalf of the university or the county, but simply a mechanism to handle this. And of course, we would abide with the county policy on all service agreements and things like that, you know, that's, that are in a place at the present time. Be glad to attempt to ask any question.
Questions, Mr. Vaughn?
No, sir.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we grant this request.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions regarding his motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
And the last item is the approval of the minutes for May the fifth.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Motion approved. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commission, Mr. Community College Board of Trustees, one announcement. Appointments to board and commissions, Safety Plan Board ETJ, one appointment.
Motion table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Animal Agreements Committee, one appointment. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, without objection, motion to table the remaining appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay. Motion to table the remaining appointments to boards and commissions.
Does that include the Census Committee or?
Yeah. All but, all but E, do you have?
I have three.
Yeah, I've got three.
Okay. So, motion to the table, all but E, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. We'll move on to E, twenty-ten, Census Complete Count Committee, fifteen appointments. Okay, Mr. Johnson, if you want to start?
I nominate Mr. Scott Clontz of Statesville. Madam Clerk, I have his address and phone number, I'll give it to you after the meeting. And I'd nominate Mr. David Boone and Mr. Buddy Hemrick.
Okay. Any addition?
Okay.
Ms. Sandy Wheeler, Mr. Darren White, and Ms. Ann Daniels.
Okay. Thank you. Also, we have Mr. Brett Fassler and Mr. Mike Tucker.
Tucker.
Do you have any, Mr. Phil?
No, sir.
Okay. Me, does that leave us, Mrs. Moore?
I believe you had two.
Yes.
Mr. Williams is three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven.
Okay, so we've still got a ways to go yet, yeah. Okay. All in favor of those names again, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. As have it. Unfinished business, any? You have any?
Pardon us, Chairman, I apologize.
Okay.
Could you repeat what you said?
Any unfinished business?
Oh.
Right now, in the public comment period? That's two, two people?
Yes.
Samuel H. Penn, they come forward, sir?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before your commission. I've been assigned a task of traveling all across North Carolina trying to get this resolution passed in, in different localities. I think y'all have a copy of it in front of you, must have, mass, mass, fair and I believe, passed it out. It's a non-binding, nonpartisan resolution that all stimulus money that comes back from Washington be spent locally. We're trying to build communities all over the United States. We've got over five hundred of these resolutions passed so far and adopted by the prospective counties and city commissions. Some sad news that's come here lately, Secretary Guyton, Secretary of Treasury Guyton announced that social security is gonna run out of money by twenty thirty-seven, Medicaid is gonna run out of money by twenty seventeen. We're losing over five hundred thousand jobs a month. You know, every state has a budget shortfall. Unemployment now, last week was eight point nine percent and expected to go over nine percent to this week. And after taking taxpayer money, General Motors had the audacity to announce that they're gonna build sixty-five percent of their cars overseas. They're gonna close four manufacturing plants in the United States and their stock failed to one dollar, the lowest it's ever been since the depression. Foreclosure up thirty percent. Chrysler's gonna close seven hundred dealerships. I don't know if it affects this area or not, but I know of a lot of areas that it's affecting. Jim, this year gonna close eleven hundred dealerships with another seven hundred next year. And we just asking that any money that you get back from the stimulus plan, like I just heard about the DDS, that it be spent locally and keep the money locally. I, I hate to see, they call, they call me a, a protectionist, if we don't take care of America, who's gonna take care of it? So that's what, I'll answer any question that you may have.
The, the resolution you said to spend the money locally, you mean in the, in the United States or?
No, no, in Iredal County. Let's say you're gonna, let's say you're gonna buy new tires for your, for your county vehicles. We'd much rather you buy Goodyear Firestone than buying Yokohama. And when you buy those Goodyear and Firestone tires, please watch, 'cause China is dumping their tires on it, on it and then you can, you can look at the code, there are codes that you can get to see that they're American-made tires. Now, I can understand if you're gonna buy a set of tires for five hundred dollars that were Goodyear and a set of Chinese tires for three hundred dollars, but they don't tell you that when you go to the dealer. You're paying top dollar price for a China-made tire, you know, so that's, that's what we're asking for, that you, that you buy local, that you're spending money locally rather than send it overseas. One of the biggest concerns we have is, let's say they're gonna build a new bridge. Well, the first thing they wanna do is bring the steel in from China and, and the cement in from Mexico. You know, we, we can, we can build girders here in the United States. You know, we, we got, we got cement plants here in the United States that, that can make, that can make cement, so that, that's, that's our concern.
Mr. Penn, hypothetically, if, if I was going to buy tires and Yokohama made a better tire at a lower price, what tires should I buy?
I would say buy, I'd buy American-made, buy Goodyear, Firestone, Pirelli, BF Goodrich. Twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, I worked with a gentleman who decided to buy his first Toyota pickup and I told him, I said, "You're gonna kill the economy." He said, "I'm just one person and see what's happened to this, to this economy. Everybody's buying Toyota and Datsuns and that type of stuff and not buying American-made cars."
Well, the Toyotas are made in America.
Yeah, but the.
That's, that's the rule, that, that's.
Because we allowed them, we, we allowed them to come into this country and do that. You know, again, they wouldn't allow us to come into their country and do that. You know, it's a shame, the vehicles that we make in Mexico, the Ford, what's the new Ford, the Fusion, it's made in Mexico. People in Mexico cannot afford to buy their car. That, that, that's the, that's the sad part of it.
What about a nuclear reactor vessel? What about a nuclear reactor vessel? If I wanted to buy a nuclear reactor vessel, where should I buy that?
I couldn't tell you, sir.
Yeah, they don't, they don't make them here.
Well, then you wouldn't, the, the, like I said, it's non-binding and it's non-partisan. Then if you needed a nuclear reactor, you would be, feel free to buy it, you know, wherever you need to buy it from.
Any additional questions? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mister David Sherrill.
Thank you for letting me speak to y'all. We are looking to get our street took over by the county. 121 Rustic Way lanes off Robinson Road. And we've just got where we can't keep it up no more without. Because everybody, people's lost their jobs and we just don't have the money to keep it up no more. And that's what we're looking for.
Tell me your request again.
To get, get our street took over by the county.
Okay.
For upkeep and payment down the road always. And, because we ain't going to let it do it. We have 15 lots and 14 houses. And there are a lot, there are a lot more that is being put in roads on the lake, around the lake than, you know, we're looking at ours.
I thought the state would take over a road if it was over 50% occupied.
Well, Mister Mashburn or Mister Pope can correct me. If you, it was, and I assume that it still is, if you bring it up to the state's standards-
Then they'll take it over.
Then they'll take it over and maintain it.
But it won't take it over if it was, if it was put in 1981 up to the future.
Well, there was a, a number of years there when the state would cease to maintain or cease to pave roads and subdivisions. And I believe it was, was it four or five years, Mister Mashburn? And then the county adopted an ordinance that said the developer had to.
The, and I don't remember the exact year, but it was in the 70s where the state had agreed that anything that was considered, quote, a, a county road, although the county doesn't have roads, if it, if it had been planted and everything before 1970, then the state would, under certain circumstances, take that one over. But from that point on, before they would agree to take anything over, it had to be built to state standards. Well, there was a period of time, now the county requires that if it's a road that's going to be dedicated to the public, that it has to meet state standards. But there was a period of time between the 70s and the 80s where there was no requirement that the road had to meet state standards. It could still be dedicated to the public and did not have to meet state standards. And that may very well be the kind of road that you're on where it's not old enough for the, the state to take it over and it didn't meet the state's standards, so they're not going to take it over now until it does.
So now, in regard to the, the roads that are being constructed on the lake, the developer pays for that now.
That's correct.
And he posts a performance bond to make sure that he accomplishes that. And once the state inspects it and it passes, he's released, released from that performance bond and the state takes it over.
That is correct.
And what we have is a number of roads in the county in those intervening years to when the state says, "We're not going to do that anymore." And the county adopted ordinance that said the developers had to. And I'm assuming this gentleman's road is somewhere in those years.
I think he said it was 81. Is that when your road was built?
The developer was put in back in the 70s, the first time it was named. Then it went into foreclosure, bank foreclosure, and then somebody else took it over in 81. That's my understanding, all the paperwork that I can pull up on.
Now, for those, if, if it did qualify originally, there is a program called paving participation where the county can assess the owners and bring it up to state standards. But, you know, I'm, I'm feeling that this one doesn't, doesn't fall in that category. So, I mean, I'd be glad to take a further look into it and see exactly what the circumstances are and, and report back to the board at your next meeting, but till I, do we know a little bit more about the dates? But the county, of course, as you know, does not maintain any roads.
Nor pay them.
No.
Mister Mashburn, in that case, I, I wish for you to do that because to even find out all the information, there's not a lot we can say about it. And I know you can get to the bottom of it. Do they still want? All right, Mr. Sherrill?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Tracy. Tracy, would you get with him and get the information so we can? Okay, thank you.
I'll be honest here. The last figure I heard from the DOT was 20 something million dollars to bring all the roads up to state standards and the state would assume the maintenance of those roads. And I've got to be perfectly honest with you, if we're going to assume that responsibility and we're going to put a lien against these people's property and assist them in that way and they pay us back, then the county's going to put all the money up front and then the property owner's going to pay it back over time. Well, folks, that business plan doesn't work because if you ever begin to pave one road in this county, this, this hall is going to be full of people requesting that we assist them in the same manner. And we'll have millions of dollars going out and the cash flow doesn't work. And I don't want to preside over a program where we're going to fill somebody with false hope that we're going to actually accomplish anything and the county does not have the financial means to do it. But if you want to proceed and let them look in it, it'll be an educational process for us and I'll be willing to do that. But I just want to be honest, on, on the front end, we've had requests like this over the years and-
And I can appreciate what you're saying, Mister Johnson, but we need to know all the facts. We don't know those at this time.
Okay.
So if he will look into it, we would understand. Perhaps give Mister Sherrill an answer at some point in time.
Okay.
Okay. Any other public comments this time? How about new business? Do we have any new business? County managers' report?
Uh, Mister Chairman, most of my report has to do with the proposed budget for '09 and '10. First of all, let me say that I, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because y'all have been very involved with, with us on where we stand at this time as far as the revenue projections and things of that nature. I will say that the proposed budget, which you have a copy of in front of you, is down $15 million over the current year's budget. It's a general fund budget of $153,448,000. It's even $7 million less than the 2007, 2008 budget. Some of the highlights in the budget are that there are no, other than three positions for the Department of Social Services, there are no new positions. There is no, there are no funds for salary increases. We've already eliminated five positions and will anticipate eliminating through attrition about 20 more positions during the coming year. And that real, that really is addressing more the budget in 2010, 2011 than the next year's budget. Capital expenditures are, last year we had $2.4 million recommended for capital purchases in the general fund. This year, we've only got $690,000 and most of those are for technical upgrades to computers, software and so forth. No new vehicles at all in the proposed budget. I will say that the, as in previous years, the largest portion, a single portion of the budget goes for education. But the percentage of the total budget, even though there's a decrease in the amount of money going to the schools, the percentage of the total budget going for education is actually increased from 43.93% to 41, 44.81%. So the, the education still is, remains to be the largest recipient of county funds. And if you look at just county funds, actually, it's closer to 54% of the county funds are going for education. The number that, that I just gave you includes all the funds that we receive for that. And the per pupil expenditure is reduced by 6.2% going down from 1466 to 1375 per pupil. But we also are using a lower per pupil or ADM number. Last, for the last two or three years, the number has been overestimated. We use it, an estimate that's given to us by the state and that has been higher than the actual number of pupils. So we, that has been reduced back this year. So overall, there's about a 6.2% decrease in the funding for education. Big picture, of course, is also in revenues. The, we do project a modest increase in the property tax collections. However, we're still seeing, you know, double-digit numbers in terms of sales tax this year compared to, to last year. So this is really what's causing us to, to have to be as drastic in our reductions as we are. It's just the economy. It's just really cut back on sales tax and, and other fees that we charge because of the development is reduced way back. I think our inspections budget, the revenue that we project there is $1.3 million less than what we expected to receive in the current year. I'm not going to go any, any more detail. We do have workshops that you will be scheduling. I will say that it's recommended that our county board of commissioners approve the proposed '09, '10 budget as presented. If so approved, it will leave the tax rate at 44.5 cents per $100 valuation based on the tax assessor's estimate of $20 billion, $387 million in tax base. To balance the budget, it will be necessary to utilize $2 million of the unappropriated fund balance, but that will leave a fund balance of 12.71%. Mister Chairman, that's the recommendation on the budget and again, you do have copies of that. The, the next item that we need to do is to go ahead and set a public hearing and I'm recommending that you set June the 2nd as the public hearing on the proposed budget.
Okay. Any questions for Mister Mashburn? If not, the motion will sit in your report.
And a motion to approve the public hearing on June 2nd, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Okay. Any questions regarding the motion?
That's the, that's our regular meeting?
That's a regular board meeting. That's correct.
Okay. All right. On the review dates, would you all mind if we, if we, well, do we need to go ahead and just set the public hearing first?
Set the public hearing first and you can set your review dates.
Okay. If most of us to set the public hearing. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. All right, now, Mister Robertson, we go with-
Yeah, the review dates y'all have got is May 26th, or we've got is May 26th, May 28th, June 4th, June 9th, and June 11th. Can, can, can we make the first meeting on May 28th? Change to 26th. Make the first meeting on May 28th.
What kind of day of the week is it?
Thursday. That's a Thursday. And then instead of June 4th, which is, I think, that's a Thursday, make it Wednesday, June 3rd. And, and I know I can't, I'm not going to be able to, June 9th, I know that I will not be able to be here. But I can on June 11th.
What days of the week are those can?
Thursday. The 11th is Thursday.
11th is Thursday.
If you wanted to, I could make it on June. I'm asking y'all to, to move a bunch of dates around here and I could do it on June 10th. Yeah.
Mister Johnson, is there any-
Last time we didn't use all of our dates, if I remember right. I think we got most, we got most of it done in three. You know, I'd like to recommend that we go for Thursday, May 28th, June the 3rd. And if y'all want to leave it on June, I'd rather move it back to, to June 10th, which is a Wednesday.
I would prefer the 10th.
Okay.
If it doesn't matter to anybody else.
That'd get us, that'd get us three and if we need to schedule more, we can schedule more.
Okay. Any questions regarding? That's the motion, Mister Robertson?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I need to repeat it?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm recommending three review dates, Thursday, the 28th, June the 3rd, and June the 10th.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion?
Is, is that in addition? Are there some other dates that are, other than these three dates?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking for those three dates and if, if y'all do any prior to those, th- those are the only three that I'm going to be able to make. If y'all-
Are you, are you saying you'd be available after the 10th, Mister Robertson? I don't want to put us in-
After the, after June 7th, I won't be, I'm hoping not to be available from the 11th through the 17th. Being home from West Point and that's my only chance to-
We got the 28th, the 3rd.
To do something as a family.
Well, if you, you know, if you start at 6:00 or so and, and then go to 9:00, I mean, that's-
We could get it done in three.
You, you, I think you can probably get it done in three meetings. I really do.
We didn't, I, I mean, I don't remember us going four.
Okay. Got a motion for four.
Well, you'll have a pretty good idea after the first meeting.
Right.
How it's going to go. I, I don't want to, I don't want to nail us down to just three days, though. If we need more time, I want us to take it.
Thursday, the 28th, is that, that's next week, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or is that, it's not, that's not-
That's next Thursday. Week from this Thursday.
Well, do, do we want to do something prior to that date? Prior to Thursday, May 28th?
If you have May 26th, that's the one change.
Oh. That was a Tuesday. Okay.
Yeah.
I can do the 20th as well.
Do we want to do Wednesday next week as well?
First day I can be here is May 28th.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to do the 28th, the 3rd?
And the 10th.
I, I'll support the motion to those three days, but- I, I'll support the motion to those three days, but the proviso that if we need more time, we, we can schedule further here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's good.
Did you set a time on that? What time do you? 6:00?
6:00.
6:00 to 9:00?
Okay.
Okay, uh, any questions, any additional questions regarding the motion? And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, um. The only other item I've got is, um, as you know, because you do have a lot of meetings in May and June, many times you only have one meeting in July. Uh, your first meeting in July would be, uh, July the 1st. If, uh, the meetings are July the, uh, 1st and the, uh, 15th, um- Do what? Did I miss the date?
7th and the 21st.
What am I looking at? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was on the wrong month. Thank you, Gene. The 7th and the 21st. The 7th and the 21st. So, um, you know, if you want to have both of those meetings, that's fine. But, uh, a lot of times what you've done is kinda break, split the difference and have one in between. And, uh, usually if we know that far enough in advance, we can do all of the hearings and everything that we need to do. So that would be the, the 14th of July.
I'll be fine with me. We have rezoned a piece of property and I don't know how long, so.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Be overwhelmed with public hearing, granted. Yep, that'll work.
Okay, we'll make a motions?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Chairman, may I clarify, that's to hold one meeting and that's July the 14th.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you have, okay. No closing session, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, do I want to thank Mr. Mashburn and his staff for this budget they presented? I know it's been a difficult process. And I know there's been, I know he has a heart for people and a concern for the people that, that work under him, and I admire him for that. And I know it's been taxing on him mentally, physically, and emotionally. And I wanna thank him for his hard work in this budget he's prepared. Having said that, I'll offer a motion for adjournment.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.